Well, it's 7 o'clock, so I'm gonna get started to keep us on track here. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Today is Thursday, January 28th, 2021, our first meeting in 2021, so welcome. And first on the agenda we have is the pledge of allegiance. And if Mr. Manning, if you could leave that for us, that would be great. Thanks.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the one state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry. Hey, just a couple of quick announcements first. If you want to make a comment during the public comment section, please use the raise hand symbol and state your name and address. And then you have three minutes to state your comment. We have two public hearings tonight, one for 794 Skyler Way and another for 523 Middle Line Road. So if you have comments on those variances, you can just wait till the public hearing to make your comment on those. As a side note, if the public hearing for 794 Skyler Way goes quicker than we anticipate, I may change the order a bit of the 523 Middle Line Road public hearing since it doesn't start till 7:30, and I may move in the 1073 Middle Line Road. So just to give everyone kind of a heads up on that. So appreciate your flexibility in that. Okay, next on the agenda is the meeting minutes for November 19th, 2020, since that was our last meeting because of the snowstorm. Can I, or does anybody have any comments or questions on those?
No. No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 19th, 2020?
I'll make the motion to approve the November meeting minutes.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Eric.
Eric, okay. Okay, Amanda, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Smasina? Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Brad.
Mr. Ari?
Yes.
Chairwoman, so then?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next up is the public comments section, so it's now open. If anybody has a comment, please take this time to raise your hand, and I will allow you to speak. Again, you have three minutes. If you could just state your name and address, that would be great. So I'll just wait a minute and see if anyone has a comment. Okay, not seeing any. I will close out the public hearing, 7:03. Okay, so we have just a couple of minutes on the public hearing, as I stated, for John and Jennifer Howard, which is 794 Skyler Way, 177.9-1-18. Just to give you a little, just a synopsis of kind of what's going on here before we open up the public hearing. This is an area variance to add a first-floor mudroom to transition between the existing attached garage and the kitchen on the property. So they're seeking a four-and-a-half-foot relief from the permitted 50-foot setback to a 45.5 front setback. All right, we got one more minute here, and then we'll get started on the public hearing. Okay, it's currently 7:05, so I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. First, I'd like to give Mr. and Mrs. Howard a chance to just kind of give us a little bit of an overview. I kind of did a little bit of a synopsis. If you have anything further to add to that, certainly like to give you an opportunity to do so at this time. So let me go to you. Okay, and there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm not sure if John and Jennifer are on. I can't tell, but this is Jace Brown. I'm their architect, and I'll be speaking on behalf of their application this evening.
Okay.
The project is, as you stated, they would like to add a mudroom and a laundry room to the first floor of their house, a pretty typical desire in the Northeast due to our climate that we all love. And we did a number of studies with this, looking at ways to do that. The optimal location for that, of course, is between the kitchen and the garage of the house where they primarily enter and exit. We did look at adding this on to the side. They do have a small amount of side setback. Unfortunately, that would result in probably going over that side setback on the side of the house where the garage currently is. We also looked at maybe adding on to the back by pushing out the back. That is where they have currently their family room, and there is a pretty steep drop-off at the back, which would make construction of an addition on that side rather difficult to frost protect. So both of those are kind of pre-existing conditions that kind of came with the house when they originally bought it. We felt that the least impactful way of doing this is what we've proposed, which is basically to add the mudroom and the laundry room to the existing garage space, and that would dislocate the garage and just push the garage forward. So the nice thing about that plan is that it will result in the garage being in the same place as it always has been. This neighborhood is characterized by front-facing garages and kind of a recessed front entry. All the other houses in the neighborhood are characterized by that form, so this would preserve that. It also doesn't require any kind of relocation of the driveway or anything invasive, and it does result in us basically pushing the garage forward 10 feet to make room for the mudroom and the laundry room, which does result in a slight overlap with the 50-foot front yard setback. So the request is for four-and-a-half feet of relief, which we feel is minimal. I would also point out that the house is located with some nice enclosing trees separating it from the adjacent properties, especially the one to the east. And it's also on the outside of a curve, so it's actually pretty hard to apprehend that it would be a little bit forward of its neighbors because of the fact that the road is curved in that location. It's not as if all the house's front yard setbacks are all lined up in a row. So we feel that this is the best solution and happy to answer any detailed questions about the proposal or address any public comments.
All right. Now, it looks like Jennifer or John might have their hand raised, so I'm just gonna see if they have any additional comments.
No, I just hit it on accident. I thought about that.
Okay, no, that's okay. Not a problem. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in regards to this action? Okay, does the board have any questions or comments?
It seems like it's pretty well thought out and well planned and doesn't change the neighborhood too much, so.
Okay. If there are no additional questions or comments, I'd like to get a motion to approve the variance for the proposed addition with the four-and-a-half-foot relief as stated in the application for 794 Skyler Way.
I'll make that motion to approve that variance of the four-and-a-half feet.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, Amanda, can I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Chairwoman, so then?
Yes. Well, congratulations and thank you, John and Jennifer Howard, as well as Jace Brown. Appreciate you coming before us. Okay, so next on the agenda is, as I stated, was the next public hearing for an area variance for Brooke and Rachel Inglesby. It is 7:11 right now. We have until 7:30 for that public hearing, which we do have to wait for until that 7:30 does roll around. So I want to push ahead the next action that we had, and then we will come back to that. So I'm just gonna set this aside here. Okay, so if you go to the next item on the agenda, that would be the continued review of the area variance application for Sticks and Stones Holding, which is Stuart Thomas and 1073 Middle Line Road, 176.1-1-23.2. So this is a continuation of the area variance for a new residential construction in a lot that's less than the five acres in the R2 district. There are five adjoining properties that are also less than the five acres. Okay, there's a couple of things that I would like to do on this. Let me just get my papers here. Okay, first thing that I would like to do is I have an email from Karen Stalters, which is our town historian, and this email was a late starter, which was inadvertently not read as it came in the day before our November zoning board meeting. So I feel this email is important to read, has information that is pertinent and relevant to this variance. So let me read that as she has written here. Wednesday, November 18th, and let's see. "Hi, Meg. My nephew's friend recently toured the property and put in an offer to purchase the property. The asking price was $99,000, and they offered $50,000, and Mr. Thomas wouldn't take less than $85,000 for it. The friend really wants to build a house there and is willing to put up a fence to protect the cemetery. I know it's only hearsay, but she told my nephew that whoever showed her the cemetery, and she put in parentheses, 'Mr. Thomas', said to her that he was planning to take all the stones out and forget there was ever a cemetery there. What if this is true? Would it be the consequences to be something, what would be the consequences to be something like this? I thought you would like to know. Please pass this on. Thanks, Karen Stalters." So that's the first item that I'd like to share for the board's consideration. So as in the other variance also for the Middle Line Road, which is the 523, which we will come back to, there is one, this was subject to referral to the Saratoga County Planning Board. However, due to the waiver agreement that we have in place with them, this action, as well as the 523 Middle Line Road action, was waived. The county planning board waived the review, and it's subject to local zoning board review only. So I just wanted to let everyone know kind of where that came out on it. Okay, another thing that was on this was, let's see, we submitted a request for a shipboat review, and in that, we got a response back, and shipboat made a couple of recommendations. And the board has this information in hand. They recommended 25-foot buffer, a restrictive deed covenant. So those are kind of the two things that they highlighted in their review and recommendations. In our town zoning, there's a couple additional things and a couple different things. So Chapter 180 of the zoning, Article 7, Special Permit Uses 180-42C, there is some additional language in there, and we have previously talked about this in its regards to the definition for a cemetery and how our code defines a cemetery. And so again, we've talked about this, and clearly this falls under the cemetery definition for that. Okay, so where are we currently on this? So our current status was, I sent an email to Mr. Sutton on January 7th of this year, '21, asking him for further clarity on the status of some outstanding items that the board has talked to him, as well as Mr. Thomas, in regards to restrictive deed covenant and approval to inventory and capture all the headstones in the cemetery by Karen Stalters, our historian. We received a response back from Mr. Sutton on the 14th, and I'll let Mr. Sutton talk in regards to that. But again, Mr. Thomas and his attorney have not provided approval for Karen Stalters to inventory the headstones. So just as a point of reference and just to add some clarity to it, in consideration of this application and variance, it is within the board's purview to consider and protect the cemeteries in our town, as it was intended by the author in the town code originally. So the town code provides some useful information that's helpful for this variance. So first and foremost, since I did read that email from Karen Stalters, I would like to give her an opportunity to talk in regards to that. So Karen, I'm gonna allow you an opportunity to talk at this time.
I'm mute. Can you hear me?
There you go.
You can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, good. "In good evening. The town has recognized this as a cemetery since before the date of 1878, as this cemetery is not a burial ground. It's made up of several families. This cemetery has historical significance to the town, as the folks that are buried there were some of the first settlers in this area. There was two mills at the corner of Giza Road and Middle Line Road, and these families were involved with those mills, and they also lived in the immediate area. There are eight persons buried here, and the State Office of Historic Preservation has recommended that the bodies not be reinterred. The first burial was in 1797, and the last one was in 1881, according to the written history. The Historic Structures and Places Committee feels strongly that this cemetery needs to be protected. And looking at the survey map showing the stones, our records only have eight of the 11 stones recorded in the survey. Being there are three stones we don't know about, our committee would like to do an inventory of all the stones, and more importantly, take pictures of them all individually for our town records, as we currently do not have any. Permission to do this was denied several times by the applicant, and now that it is winter, this will have to wait until spring. I have also suggested that a fence be put around the cemetery for protection, and the State Office of Historic Preservation also recommends this. The town zoning code also states this as well. This mentions the 50-foot distance from the cemetery to the nearest building and providing an enclosure, a fence, in Section 3. What would be ideal is to have a three-foot easement off the Circle C Road to the cemetery so people can visit the cemetery if need be. This is mentioned in Section 2 of the code. The Historic Structures and Places Committee also has concern about how close the proposed house might be to the cemetery. Having the home at least 50 feet satisfies the code, but that is still pretty close. Our hope is that the new homeowner would center the house on the property, leaving more distance between the cemetery and the house. The Historic Structures and Places Committee is asking that an inventory be done of all the stones with pictures, and that a fence be erected to protect the cemetery, and that an easement of three feet from Circle C Road be granted for future access to the cemetery. These items could be used as a condition of approval by the zoning board. Thank you very much, Karen Stalters, town historian."
Karen, thanks so much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, would anyone from the community or the alternate, J.D., would like to speak in regards to this action as it applies to the variance?
I certainly would. Granted?
Yes, of course, J.D.
Oh, okay. I wanted to give you a little bit of the background, just so I'm not misconstrued as someone who slightly is interested in history. If you do a long vein from high school, junior high school time, high school, I was part of the New York State Historical Association, and myself and another high schooler took it upon ourselves to firm the committee to save Ellis Island, which was a letter-writing campaign, which eventually led to Lee Iacocca joining us and being our backer to get this to become a national park, which was just out there in the middle of New York Bay at that time. Went on from there, and then in 74, I was a Suffolk County Park Ranger, assigned to Sacticos Manor, which was built in 1690s, was the headquarters for the British troops on Long Island during the Revolutionary War. By '76, I was a National Park Ranger, working on the first settlers' cabin and also on an archaeological dig for the Makah Indians that was 500 years old. Flash forward then to the '90s or so, I worked with the late Kathy Bridie, who was historian of Boston. I worked with her on such things as getting plaques for the railroad bike path there, the Veterans Bike Path. Went back to school late in years to get my master's in regional planning, and did my internship with the New York State Parks Rec and Historic Preservation. And in and out of the time, I worked on several other entities that had history in mind. So I just wanted to give you that background, just without giving you my full resume, just to give you an idea that history and local history is not just a slight interest. So I prepared something for tonight. I said, "Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity, for sharing public comment and opinion. To begin with, I'd like to share a bit of recent history, along with some historic segments of our heritage and past. Before moving to Milton, I enjoyed several homes and addresses around Boston Lake. One of these homes was in the shadow of what is known as the Castle of East Side Drive, which was built in 1885 by the famous artist William Bliss Baker, and there's a New York State Historic marker there that there knows this significance. Another home I enjoyed, which should be noteworthy and more tuned toward, let me dovetail with this project on Middle Line Road with the cemetery, is several years I spent on Lake Shore Road. So my neighbors, two houses down, were Shannon and Dick Carison. They were good neighbors and great stewards of grave sites in their backyard, the first white settlers of this area, Nicholas and Michael McDonald, who built the cabin there in 1763. The family burial ground is now fenced in, yet accessible for public viewing of some five, six headstones, including those of Nicholas and Michael McDonald. The town maintains the overgrowth and presentation, and there's also a historic marker you may have seen, traveling north and south by White Beach Road, up on Route 50, so a half-mile down towards the lake. The Carisons always allowed people to go across their property to look at these grave sites, our first settlers. And as history or it's told, we would have been called McDonaldville had it not been for Eppleth Ball who came and settled here and negotiated the name with McDonald's over a jug of whiskey, to name it Ball's Town, okay? Now I live in Milton with my significant other, Betsy. Though I'm not next door to a historic site, I am living with a direct descendant of Catherine Van Lentsen-Retzliere and Philip Skyler's daughter, Elizabeth Skyler, or as you may know her as, Mrs. Alexander Hamilton. Mrs. Hamilton died in 1854 in Washington, D.C. Let's put that in perspective, as the town board considers the variance on lands at home the remains of our first Milton settlers and grave sites dating back to 1812, some 42 years earlier than when Miss Hamilton passed away. Are these grave sites significant at 1073 Middle Line Road? My answer, extremely. And my final comment on this subject is that sticks and stones must protect these bones. Our local historic past must be preserved, not desecrated. Thank you.
Thanks, J.D. Appreciate it. All right, at this time, I'd like to give Mr. Sutton or Mr. Thomas an opportunity to speak in regards to this variance as well. Let's see here, let me go to... Mr. Sutton, there we go. All right, Mr. Sutton, you have the floor. You may have to unmute yourself.
I have to allow my microphone, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I did not get the gentleman's name who was just speaking. I do want to say that I am a bit of a history buff as well. You guys sent us Joe Betties, I think, over in Galway. I think he terrorized New Galway in 1776, and I know his parents' house is south there on Route 50, if you remember that history. But I understand very well how historic Middle Line Road is. I believe when the gentleman talked about McDonald Cemetery, he mentioned that the town maintains it, and that's one of the essential issues that we have, Madam Chair. I believe that you're aware. We believe that the town has the responsibility for making that into a 291 cemetery that's described by the other sections of the zoning law. And we do believe that those sections, which apply to special use permits and subdivisions, do not apply to a situation that we have here, where the town apparently does not consider the cemetery that they have responsibility for. So we do take exception to the rule or the position of the chair with regard to the applicability of those two sections involving subdivisions and special use permits, and we do recognize that we have a conflict there with the board.
Okay. Is there anything additional you wanted to point out in regards to this, Mr. Sutton?
Oh, forgive me, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, okay, no problem. All right. All right, so the board was suggestive, as I had mentioned, the board was pretty suggestive in our recommendations and our, yeah, I guess, recommendations at our November meeting for, for the variance and kind of moving forward with this. And furthermore, in an email that I sent to Mr. Sutton on, on January 7th, and I don't believe these were addressed in full, so in determining, obviously in determining, and I've gone through this pretty much in many of the, many of the meetings that we've had, but in determining whether we grant an area variance, the zoning board of appeals is required to engage in kind of a balancing, balancing act or balancing test. The board weighs the benefits to the applicant versus the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community in which the variance is requested. So, as I like to do, because I think it's a good reminder for everyone, is to read, to read the language that we have in our, in our code on area variance. So, in its consideration of the area variance, the board of appeals shall take into account the benefits to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant, as I previously stated. So, Section A is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance. The next one is whether the benefits stopped by the applicant can be achieved by such method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. C is whether the requested area variance is substantial. D, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And E, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration can be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. So, the Board of Appeals, in the granting of the area variance, shall grant the minimum variance, but it shall deem necessary and adequate, at the same time, preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood, the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Okay, so, at this time, I'd like, I'd like to get some feedback and some discussion with our, with our board members, kind of see where their heads are at and see what direction we are leaning towards here on this. Let's see, Eric, why don't, why don't you, you get us started on?
Is it Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
I want to know if they had considered answering all the questions from your January 7th email, which they hadn't done, response letter, I don't know if they had forgotten some things, or just to give them an opportunity if, if they want to. Before that, I'd like to ask them something I just heard, you know, Lee said was hearsay? Since we have the principal's online here, I'd like to know, is that true? Did they, are they offered and refused an offer? And did he say that he's going to get rid of the, the grave marker? Is that something that he, that he did in fact say? We asked the applicant that.
Sure. Why don't we ask, let's see, it looks like Mr. Thomas might be on here. Mr. Thomas, I allowed you the opportunity to speak, it looks like your mic might be off.
Hello.
Hi there.
How are you today?
Good. Did you, did you get a chance to hear Mr. Smazinow and his question to you?
I'm very clear about what I tell people. And I let people know that there is gravestones on the property, that they're on the survey, that's because we made sure they were on the survey. I tell people that most of the gravestones are on, in the setback, that you can't build within the setback, and that three of the gravestones are actually on someone else's property, so it's only a portion of the gravestones. I never tell anybody that I'm going to remove them. I give them the ship a letter which clearly states, and we all at Sticks and Stones Holding agree, that they shouldn't be disturbed and they shouldn't be moved. I have said that from the very first meeting in August 27th, and that's our standard. I have never had a written offer for $50,000. And I do not entertain offers that are not in writing as they wouldn't be legal.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, you know, one, and the other, two, would be, I understand written or not, just as a matter of fact, I can understand it, your offer exactly $5,000, you rejected it, particularly fine. Just wanted to see if that in fact would happen. Whether it was written or not, it was not my question.
I'm a Realtor. In being a Realtor, I have certain things that I have to do. And one of the things I do is that if someone is serious and wants to make an offer, it needs to be in writing. Now, the confidentiality of offers is up to the individuals if they decide to tell you, but I have never, ever had a written offer of $50,000 on this property.
So basically, you refused to answer the question, is that correct? They asked you if somebody offered?
No, I answered the question. I don't, I didn't answer the question, I'm not sure, you're breaking up a bit, I'm not sure what you're getting at. I have two different standards of how I handle things.
Did someone verbally say they wanted to buy your property? Is that, it's a yes or no? I don't care if you're a Realtor.
I can't hear you, you're breaking up. Please repeat.
No, it's okay, we can go on.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, correct?
Mr. Smazinow.
I'd like to, one, if there is ever an easement, I think the, you shouldn't say as this should be, but leave it to buildings and grounds to decide what's appropriate. I have no idea what equipment they would use to maintain a cemetery, so I don't think we want to hamstring ourselves in that. As far as I know, a single lot is not a subdivision, so I have no idea why they're quoting subdivision regulations. And I just wanted to bring the board up to what would have worked, you know? And by going right, how it turns out. I was on a comprehensive plan from, on 2000, where there was only, we missed the recommendation and it's going, you know, a few places.
Hey, Eric?
Yes.
I don't know if anyone else is having a hard time hearing you, but it seems...
I am having a hard time.
Okay, it's a bit garbled, so I don't know if Amanda can, or you can move closer to, to the speaker possibly, that may help.
We'll try it again, can you hear better now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, comprehensive plan, I was on it for both 2000 and 2012. In 2000, we changed the zoning from, it was R1, R2, and R3, where the R, which is where this property is, was changed from two and a half to five acres. I should note that, you know, this is what the recommendation we made to the town board and they adopted it. My own property was zoned two and a half acres and changed to five acres, just as an aside.
Eric?
Yes.
Just, I don't mean to interrupt you, but to clarify, this property was created in 1984. It was, as Bill Lewis has said, it was a pre-existing, legally-created lot as of 2001. And in 1991, in April 91, there was a CO issued on the property for the current double white that's on it. I think this is in the application, and I believe Meg and Bill have reiterated this several times during the meetings.
Well, thank you. All right, now I'll get back to what I was saying. The five-acre zoning was determined by meetings throughout the town, a survey, and it was a consensus of town to maintain the rural aspect of the western part of town. Now, the properties that did not conform to the new regulations, which in this case we could say was a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, were, we figured would over time phase out. Or, you know, the people living there, we didn't have any problem with that, that was fine. What you've presented to us is a non-conforming, pre-existing lot, which has very, it's got historical and physical constraints on them. You gave us a sketch, we asked for more information, we've never received it. You've, basically, I have been beating around the bush trying to, you know, not listening to our request at all, which is not, in my mind, really productive. And you haven't provided us the information where we can seriously even look at your area variance. I can't tell you, give us a plot plan, you know, if, if you had just rehabilitated the trailer that was on there or whatever was on there, I guess that would have been fine. But you're making, your sketch made everything larger. I can't tell where this, where these bodies are. I don't take a sketch, it's not official, as something that I can go by. And, you know, I, I wish that you had asked, you know, helped us, letting our historian get on the property or cooperated in some way so that we could help you, but you've left us with our hands tied. I don't know why. I honestly don't know why. This is, you know, it seems to me that anyone would consider any intern soul to be precious and should be respected. And there are town laws that cover that. And we want to abide by those. In addition, even if there were no law, this is something that, you know, is just a human thing that we should do. That being said, I'm sorry that you don't give us the information. I really, now it's kind of late, and, you know, I, I realize that it was, we'll see when court, you know, Supreme Court, and you're right, but I'm, I'm really, I just don't understand your actions, I really don't. You never, you just don't answer us. It's sad.
Jerry, can I ask you, would you like to speak in regards to this?
Yes. See, I apologize if any of this is redundant, but the application deserves to be considered carefully by every one of us. As we must, as you must know, we as a board use an area variance criteria balancing test as a means for approval or disapproval. You can read out the structure that exists, you don't see that as an option, you is better, I understand. Will there be an undesirable change to the neighborhood or detriment to nearby property? Here we can only assume that because of no access to the property, we don't know the full extent of how much property will be consumed by the cemetery. We shouldn't push a problem down the road, this is a probable detriment, in my opinion. Is the request substantial? There's a definite, that's a definite yes, because it's about 40% of the lot. The applicant obviously knew that before, because it precipitated the request for this variance. Putting the property for greater value isn't justification for granting this variance. Will the request have an adverse physical or environmental effect? I believe yes. The cemetery needs to be identified and protected for long-term preservation, so these first residents of our town are represented and respected as they should be. Whether difficulty, whether the difficulty is self-created, the applicant states the town caused the hardship by changing the code. The code changed in 2001, the application was submitted in 2012. We as a board understand this consideration should be relevant, but not necessarily stop the granting of the variance. I agree, we just do not have enough information and for whatever re, why, the reason for the unwillingness to cooperate, I do not understand either. I think that's all I have to say.
Pat? Would you like to say something?
Yes, Madam Chair, and the applicant has not moved forward like we requested him to do on any of the questions that we were requested, requested in the, back in November. And I feel that we can't, can't move forward on this.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, I think I agree with Eric's comments and concerns, so that's it, you know, it's just, that's my concern. He answered and he gave those comments and concerns about it, so I'm good.
All right. I think when I look at the application, look at the process, and, you know, the documentation that we've received, some of the letters, emails, that sort of thing, I think the two biggest things, when I look at it, for the criteria, as far as the variance approval, disapproval goes, stood out to me was whether the alleged difficulty was self-created and whether the requested area variance is substantial. As far as whether the difficulty was self-created, you know, as, as we've stated, you know, we've stated some dates here, the difficulty in this, this application was entirely self-created. As the five-acre lot minimum went into effect 2001, obviously, it's been, you know, 19 years since, since that, that has transpired. The applicant stated that the town caused the hardship by changing the code, but this is not the case. As previously stated, the applicant purchased a property when it knew or should have known the requirements of the code, particularly in a case where it is new construction and a project, they know a project is going to take place on that, that piece of property. As far as whether the requested area variance is substantial, the lot size is three acres. This was, you know, as, as Mr. Thomas has stated, was, was approved in 1984, and it was a non-conforming, pre-existing lot. All the information was known to the applicant, the code requires a five-acre minimum in the R2, the R2 district. I find that the two-acre differential to be substantial, particularly where the lot was already allowed by variance-type relief. I find that amount of the variance to be significantly increased because of the physical constraints to the site, due to the unknown locations of the various human burials on the site, so that exposure... on the site, so that exposure, um, these burial sites are not known in terms of quantity, location. Um, we have a map, but, you know, as, as Mr. Smith now stated, it's essentially a sketch where it's not an official, um, official map. Um, so they're scattered, unknown locations of, um, of where they are, so it reduces the usable acreage and increases the magnitude of the relief sought. Um, due to the unknown location of the burials and the applicant's unwillingness to allow the town historian to inventory at the burial site, it remains unknown whether or not a new single-family structure with a well and septic and everything else that would be needed can be safely and lawfully designed, um, and constructed on this, this property. Um, so those are kind of, some of the things that, that have, you know, kind of gone through my mind. Um, so, I guess at this point, um, I'd like to, you know, if there's no further questions or comments from the board, um, I would like to get a motion to approve or disapprove the variance as stated in the application for ten seventy-three, Middle Line Road, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, I move that the Milton zoning board appeals, deny the application to the area of variance, dated at ten seventy-three, Middle Line Road. The following reasons among, dated, the benefit to the applicant, they, as a detriment to the safety and welfare, in case the applicant stated and to flip property, being named to, um, that's, because of unknown locations, common burial sites, reliable, documented and verified, on about the subject of real property, it remains unknown whether or not the code, if it's been safe to be processed, located, at the burial ground, with no likely impact, if unsafe and harmful, grant the variance, knowing, to decide without knowing the documentation of the burial. An undesirable change could be, enabled by detriments of nearby property, the undesirable change could be the risk and high likelihood that a known burial ground having existed will be dead, or be destroyed. Uh, between eight and eleven stones. Evidencing burials from seventeen ninety-seven to eighteen eighty-one, with most burials in the eighteen thirties, from the multiple families who likely owned and worked in nearby mills, it is entirely undesirable and detrimental to change to both the neighborhood and the town. The State Office of Historic Preservation stated that the cemetery should not be removed or excavated, but rather avoided in order to prolong, uh, promote long-term preservation. The board concurs with these recommendations. The benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. The applicant stated that he clearly understood that he has a present right to simply rebuild, but not enlarge or expand the current single-family residence on the site. It is a pre-existing, non-conforming condition which may not be enlarged or expanded. The condition of the current structure is not hidden, rather obvious on visual inspection, and necessity for renovation was immediately apparent at, on first sight. The variance is substantial. Proposed variance will have an adverse effect and impact on both the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. In this case, the grant of the variance will allow the construction of a single-family dwelling with a well-septic system in a manner that may imperil the unknown locations of present burial sites. This is obvious physical harm to an existing historical conditions and disrespectful of others. The alleged difficulty was entirely self-created. The application materials reflect that the applicant very recently purchased the property in a foreclosure sale. You know, when somebody is in real estate, maybe they should get their ducks in a row before they go out and buy something on speculation. Over the course of several meetings, the applicant has stated that he will not undertake the single-family residence project himself, that he has several business partners, and that their intention is to simply flip the subject property to a third-party buyer. It is evident to the board, based upon the statements of the applicant, that he intends to disregard the self-created difficulty and appropriate proper treatment and respect for burial grounds by ignoring or otherwise failing to address the known and undefined conditions of the site. Compounding, compounding the self-created difficulty, the board finds that the applicant's intention to ignore self-created difficulty is highly, likely to dump the difficulties and problems with the site onto an unknown third-party buyer. This would have been so simple to remedy. I, I don't understand. The zoning board considers the imposition of reasonable conditions, however, and the applicant stated unwillingness to comply. The board specifically finds that the applicant was directed to contact the State Office of Historic Preservation early in the process, and he did not do so, nor did his attorney. The board specifically finds that the board encouraged the applicant to permit the town of Milton historian access to the site for a specific purpose of determining the specific location of burial locations on the site. At the public meeting, the applicant refused and denied the historian access, asserting that he had no insurance and that there was difficult terrain on the residential lot. Finally, he stated the board's access would be determined by his attorney. The board's counsel contacted the applicant's counsel after the meeting in order to promote and facilitate a exodus. This too was unsuccessful after diligent efforts by the board. Should be noted that we did inform the applicant that town insurance would cover the historian. So it was a bogus play to begin with. Board finds that this applicant has been uncooperative in the process, evasive and not forthright with reasonable requests of the board. The board finds that the applicant has not been candid or forthright concerning the true conditions at the property. The board further finds that the applicant was directed to map and locate the exact locations of the burials on site. The map that was submitted was wholly inadequate, lacks measurements and locations, among other deficiencies. Due to the applicant's own non-compliance, the board does not believe that mapping is sufficiently reliable, complete or accurate with respect to the site conditions, such that the relief could be justified. Finally, the board finds and determines that it is the obligation under law for all parties concerned here, that it is both the applicant and the zoning board to act responsibly with respect to the history of the town of Milton, to preserve and respect burial sites. That's my motion.
Okay. Thank you.
I second that motion.
Amanda, can I get the roll, please?
Chris Smith now.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Akari.
Yes.
Here, woman soda.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so as we, um, have completed that, um, we will head back in the agenda to the, the public hearing for the area variance for Brooke and Rachel Inglesby at five twenty-three, Middle Line Road, two one five, point dash one, dash one three, dash, or point one two. This is an area variance for the erection of a garage for storage of recreational vehicles, collector's cars, and RV, as well as property maintenance equipment. This lot is in the R two district, requiring five acres. The lot is both narrow and deep. They are requesting a relief of twenty-five feet on the side setback from the required fifty feet to twenty-five feet. The adjoining neighbor that this would affect is the town of Milton. It's, um, kind of like a, a entrance that could be used for, for the park that's, um, off of sixty-seven. After our last zoning meeting, as I stated for the previous, um, action, this application was referred to the Saratoga County Planning Board as the property is near a county road. And during a further review, we were able to find the waiver agreement with the county planning board, and this was, this falls under the waiver, so we are able to make, um, a determination on this, um, as a, as a zoning board. So furthermore, um, let's see, um, in addition to the town, town of Milton, oh, that's right, at, on the, so, kind of going back to the December ninth meeting for the town, um, the top board meeting, um, they met and they discussed the variance as it pertains to this, this property that we own, right next to, right next to this, this variance, and, um, they have, they have no objections to the variance. And so I would like to, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing, um, for this action. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regards to this? Um, I'm going to give, let's see, Brooks and Rachel, if you'd like to say something, I'll open up the mic. If not, totally okay, I'm just gonna allow you the opportunity.
How's it going?
Hi. How are you?
Not too bad.
Good, thanks.
Uh, no, we're, we're pretty good, if you guys, uh, have a firm understanding of what we're looking to do.
Okay, I just want to say thank you for your consideration.
Sure. Thank you. Well, thank you for, for coming before us, we certainly appreciate it. And, okay, looks like, um... Barb, um, you have your hand raised, but your mic is still, wait, oh, there you go.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, and, uh, reiterate what you had to say, Meg, but I did promise to bring that before the board and, and we absolutely had no objections and welcome to the neighborhood.
All right, well, thank you, Barb, appreciate that. Okay, so, um, since I don't see any, um, further, further comments, questions, I'd like to, a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, thanks, Jerry, and can I get a second?
I'll give you a second.
Okay, Pat. And, um, can I get the roll call, please, Amanda?
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Akari.
Yes.
Here, woman soda.
Yes. Does anyone from the board have any additional questions or comments in regards to this action? Eric?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, I just have a question for the applicants, um, the, the, uh, part of the building facing the road, do you, have you settled on a way how you're gonna finish it, what it's gonna look like?
Okay, let me, hold on. They're probably trying to talk and I can't. There we go.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, we were, we were looking to do a white line on the match of the house.
So it'll look the same as the house?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board for the applicants? Okay. If there's no additional questions or comments, I'd like to get a motion to approve the variance for the proposed garage with a twenty-five foot relief as stated in the application for five twenty-three, Middle Line Road.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, good, Jerry.
I'll make, I'll make the most, I'll make the motion to approve the variance.
Okay, that's great. And Eric. Okay. Amanda, can we get the roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Akari.
Yes.
All right, well, congratulations to you both, and, um, we look forward to seeing that. Come along.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Um, there are no other announcements, so, being none, we will move to the adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Yes.
Eric?
Second.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, great. And I think we all concur. Thank you, Amanda, thank you, Brenda, appreciate you guys. Have a great night, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.